We're here on our not regular Monday nights. We appreciate you coming out on a Tuesday. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And leading us are very nice students that we're going to be recognizing in just a few words.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, do you have any changes to the agenda tonight? With that, we're going to open up with our recognition. And Ann, if you would start us off.
I would love to. I'd like to invite the students who are recipients of the President's Volunteer Service Award to come stand right over here so we can recognize you. Nine students from Beaverton School District have been awarded the President's Volunteer Service Award by the Oregon Chinese Coalition for a combined 1,420 volunteer hours in a single year. Receiving the gold award are Cherry Zhang of Westview High School, David Shaw and Maggie Bao of Sunset High School, and Janelle Thewald of Whitford Middle School. Silver award recipients are Jenny Zhang and Jackie Zhang of Sunset High School and Laura Quinn of Westview High School. The bronze award goes to Eleanor Salt of Stoller Middle School. Nancy Bai of Sunset High School is a non-resident student who contributed 271 volunteer hours. Even though she's not qualified for this program, her volunteerism won her the Community Volunteer Service Award created by Oregon Chinese Coalition based on the same criteria of this award.
My name is Janelle. I'm in seventh grade of Whitford Middle School. Today, I'd like to share a few words about the benefits of volunteering, how I got started, and what I'm doing in the future. Volunteering is very important. There are many not-so-fortunate people whose lives are significantly, gently improved by the work of volunteers. Though you probably interact with volunteers more than you know. Libraries, museums, youth clubs, and other organizations rely on volunteers for their day-to-day work. If they had to pay for this help, they'd become so expensive that very few people would use them, or their quality of their programs would suffer. Volunteering helps not only the community and the people they help, but the volunteers themselves. During my service, I've learned more about the community and the issues and challenges it faces. But I've also met with people from all walks of life who I otherwise never would have met while making new friends, improving my social network, and gaining self-confidence. And I feel better about myself because I'm making a difference. There are many things people can do to volunteer. My sister and I started with little things, like joining a group of students to get performances at retirement homes. But I started to get serious about volunteering after attending a summer camp called Camp Meadowwood Springs. It gives wonderful therapy to kids who have difficulties with communicating and socializing. I met with the camp sponsors, the Oregon Elks, and they told me that the number of campers has declined in recent years due to the Elks' lack of advertising resources. Feeling seeing as so many kids could benefit from Camp Meadowwood, I decided to help spread the word. I did many things, such as writing a Wikipedia article, getting the camp flyer posted around the Portland area school districts, and also working with the Oregon Chinese Coalition to organize dozens of volunteers who stayed with the Elks over a weekend to prepare the camp for the last summer's campers. After helping other people's charities, I got so addicted to volunteering that I asked my relatives to donate money to charity instead of buying me gifts for Christmas. I decided to start my own project called Let's Pair Up, which helps kids who have trouble making friends by pairing them up with kids who can do it more easily. This will benefit both sides because the kids who have trouble making friends will make more friends, and kids who are already confident in it will be more open-minded and inclusive. According to the longest human study at Harvard, which started about 80 years ago, about one in five people report that they're lonely, which is bad for their mental and physical health. So Let's Pair Up will make a difference for a lot of people. We are planning to start clubs at several local schools soon. Volunteering is important. It helps the community and the volunteers themselves. It makes people happier and healthier, and it helps keep society running. We, the volunteers of the Beaverton Schools, would appreciate any help that the board can give us. Thank you for listening.
I'm going to have my fellow board members join me up once.
As you can tell, this is our board's favorite thing to do. For those of you who don't know, January is National School Board Month, and we're here to... Let's stay up there. It's one thing where I'm going to be the boss. So anyway, come on and play nice. So we're fortunate to have a school board that has the ability to work together. They think independently, but when a decision is made collectively, they really support that decision. If those of you who do not know, school board members do not get paid. It's an unpaid position. It's a volunteer position. I know that each of these folks give up time from their families, from their jobs, to do what's best in basically guiding almost a billion-dollar entity to do what's best for students and staff. They work tirelessly. In addition to just attending board meetings, every one of these board members is on some sort of committee, whether it's a planning committee, a financial committee. There's multiple committees. They help bargain our contracts. They do several things. In addition to serving Beaverton at the local level, several of these folks have been recognized at the state and national level. Donna Tyner is the vice chair of Color Caucus for Oregon School Boards Association. Leanne Larson has actually been the president of the Oregon School Boards Association at different times. Becky, I know, is a legislative liaison to OSBA. And Anne Bryant was the first Oregon school board member elected as School Board Member of the Year. So once again, these jobs, and if you're out in the audience and you'd like to run for one of these jobs, they come up at four-year terms. And I think they would say it's a very fulfilling job. Also, they deal with some very complex issues, whether that has to do with high school boundaries, budgets, opening, closing of schools, almost anything you can think of. They're very, very complex issues in guiding the education of 42,000 students and over 6,000, 5, 6,000 employees. And they deal with this in a very compassionate, empathetic way, but they also know that when tough decisions have to be made, they're willing to stand up and do what's right for students and staff. So please join me in thanking the Beaverton School District Board of Directors.
And now, we are going to hear from our Beaverton Education Association, Sarah Schmidt.
Good evening, everybody. Superintendent Nick Grodding, Chair Tim Check, and members of the board, thank you for the time that you spend doing this important work. I am going to jump into the Common Middle School Experience work. I've had many conversations with both Dawn and Becky, so they know my feelings about this, but as I've talked to more BU members, it seemed appropriate to speak to the entire board tonight about this. So at this point in the process, staff in the comprehensive middle schools have been informed about the work that's being done on looking at a common middle school schedule. And as of this week, they have an opportunity to fill out a survey to give their feedback. However, it has caused a great deal of disappointment and frustration that teacher input wasn't an earlier part of this process, and now it seems as though there's a deadline to make a decision, and now they're being asked to give their feedback. Teachers, counselors, and specialists hold way too much knowledge about the biggest strengths and challenges in middle schools and all the little intricacies in between to leave them out of this process. After the feedback and survey data is gathered, it's going to be really helpful for folks to see how this information is informing the process and to have transparency and how decisions are made. In this case, and in general, the employees in Beaverton, who are the very best, by the way, as you know, the employees in Beaverton will know that they are respected as professionals when you look to us as such. We will know that you truly value our commitment to our students when you involve us in the decision-making that impacts our work. We will know that, all caps, we collaborate is still a thing when teachers are brought to the table as a priority rather than as an afterthought. For changes to middle school schedules to yield the best outcomes, it's clear that there needs to be a very thoughtful and very thorough engagement process with middle school staff. So I'm going to end with my favorite leadership quote from the great, yet fictional, President Jed Bartlet. You have a lot of help, you listen to everybody, and then you call the play. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Diana Hess from OSEA.
Good evening, Superintendent Grodding, board, and all the guests. As the president of the Beaverton Chapter of School Employees Association, I am grateful for the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "No work is insignificant. All labor that uplifts humanity has dignity and importance and should be undertaken with painstaking excellence." As we begin the negotiations process with BSD this month, we want to remind our community that all of our jobs that our classified staff do are so crucial to the success of the students, teachers, and administrators. From our transportation department, who ensures our students arrive safely to and from school daily, to our nutrition services department that feed our children, our custodial and maintenance staff that keep our buildings clean, safe, and warm, our school support staff of parent educators, technology instructional assistants, library media assistants, campus supervisors, testing coordinators, interpreters, and even crossing guards, who daily give everything to supporting an educational environment where our students can thrive. Our office staff that welcomes parents and students while giving all they can to their administrators, our technology department that ensures more and more pieces of equipment and programs run well for all. These are some of the many job classifications that we will be bargaining for. From the direction that our members will give us to follow from the survey that was just sent out last week, we bring our excellence to you and ask for a fair and reasonable contract for our members. Thank you.
Next up, we're going to have public participation. And just a reminder, the school board welcomes public comment if you would like to address us. There's a yellow card that you can complete in the front. All public comments are limited to two minutes, and we're going to really try to keep you to two minutes. We're not trying to be rude. You'll see the clock right behind me here. If I can tell you're wrapping it up, that we're going to keep you to two minutes so we can try to hear everyone tonight. And we'll be rotating on topics, and we're going to do this for the first 45 minutes. And if there's any additional comments, we'll hear them at the end of our meeting. And someone, either staff or board, will get back to you at a later date if you have a question to the board. So with that, Vice Chair Simpson will call you up, and then he'll call up who's up next so you can get ready to come up front.
Right. So Lisa Bedris, followed by Molly Klein.
Hope you all had a restful break. And my name's Lisa Bedris. I am a Raleigh Hills parent, and I'm sure you're thinking, we told you many times that the Raleigh Hills 6A program is closed. Final decision, we are not changing. And so imagine, you feel like I do, when my kids ask me 70 questions, well, the same questions 70 times, and I like to say, "Asked and answered." In this case, we have asked, and we have gotten some feedback, but in the four months since the announcement, we don't feel like we've gotten actual answers. At least nothing that describes a rationale. And I'm sure it's out there. I'm sure it's out there. What we would ask respectfully is a pause in this decision. We've just heard about the middle school schedules. The comprehensive middle school experience isn't established yet. The middle school boundaries are in flux. And we're curious about what's going to happen with the other options programs. So we just hope that you would pause on this decision. Thank you.
So Molly Klein, followed by Steph Kaufman.
My name is Orissa Crispin. My children...
My name is Orissa Crispin. My children attend Bridgewood Elementary. Our son is there on open enrollment, and our daughter is on administrative transfer. I'm here tonight on behalf of my family, about 16 families in our school community, and I'm sure many more district-wide. We are grappling with a policy change that we were notified of just last month in how administrative transfers are evaluated and granted. We've gone from an historically more flexible, family-friendly policy on this to one that is very restrictive, and now being, we feel, abruptly enforced. The change was made to only allow transfers based on a narrow selection of hardships. For at least the last year, these transfers were still granted, just as they have been in the past. The decision to enforce this now feels unnecessarily abrupt and harsh for all of us, but particularly for families with current fourth graders facing the prospect of switching schools two years in a row. This is something numerous studies have shown is detrimental to children's social, emotional development and academic performance. We feel this decision is creating hardship, financial, logistical, emotional, for our families, and especially for our students in being faced with leaving their school community and the only school environment that many, if not most, or most if not all, have ever known. In addition, many of the parents in our group have contributed greatly to Bridgewood over the years, and the community as a whole would suffer from a loss from our departures. We're asking that this decision be revisited, that you review the letter that we have prepared detailing our concerns and relating the impact this will have on each of our individual families. Thank you.
All right, we have Steph Kaufman and Sandy Gensdale. Together.
No. That's part of saying Ohio.
Is there any more administrative transfers, or is that...
Yeah. Do you have a car?
Yeah, I have a car. Well, I just filled one out. You got it!
Welcome.
All right.
Hey, guys. Thanks for the time. I guess when you look at the document, there was something that we...
Flashlight.
All right. As you get a chance to review the document, don't be alarmed by its size. We tried to, as a collective group of parents, put all that we could think of as relevant factors into, you know, why we feel this way. It's very easy to get just super emotional about it and be like, "Ah, our kids, right? This is the only school they've ever known." But the more we tried to step back from it, we really realized, what did I put this? We realized the impact of these decisions and the idea that we've gone quite a few years with a status quo, and then now it's been told, hey, that's done, right? And it's very hard to explain to an eight- or 10-year-old, right, why this is happening. And so I guess I would just ask, you know, thoughtful review of the document, and please reach out if we have any questions. We'd love to talk more about it. We know that this is a district-wide issue. We can't be drawn to receive this and figure this out. And we tried to reach out to as many parents as we could to, you know, have folks show up and try to make our voices heard on this. But yeah, I suppose that's all gone on the matter is just to reiterate what Orissa just said is that when we step back and put it in its plainest terms, it feels like we're creating an additional hardship for these kids in having them switch in this manner. So anyway, we'll work towards it. Thank you.
We have Melissa Tom and Marlo McElroy.
EDM board and Superintendent Grodding, we should each have a packet with some slides with presenting some of our data. My name is Dr. Marlo McElroy. I've been a pediatrician in our community for 20 years and have three kids in the Beaverton Public Schools. I'd like to talk to you today about delaying school start times for middle and high school students in our district. I believe that our current policies for school start times stand in direct opposition to the existing science around sleep and the biological needs of adolescents. As a community that prides itself upon evidence-based practices, it is our responsibility to our kids and community to support them in a way that meets these needs. What we know about adolescent sleep is quite clear. Teens need more than eight to 10 hours of sleep per night, yet fewer than one-third of our high school students get more than seven hours of sleep. Changes during adolescence shift their natural sleep cycle, making it much harder to fall asleep earlier. Ideal sleep for teens happens between 11:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. Our current school start time of 7:45 makes it very difficult for the teens to get the sleep they need. It's not a matter of just telling them to go to sleep earlier or catch up on the weekends. Poor sleep is linked to decreased attention, memory, behavior control, executive functioning, higher rates of anxiety and depression, tardiness, absenteeism, motor vehicle accidents, you name it. The American Academy of Pediatrics has long recommended delaying school start times as a key way to help teens sleep more. A growing number of schools have done this across the country. Seattle School District in 2016-17 delayed from 7:50 to 8:45 a.m. The study came out in December showing measurable benefits. Increased daily sleep of over half an hour, bringing them closer to the recommendation, also reduced absenteeism and tardism, improved academic performance.
Okay, can you just email us, or you provide us with...
Yes, absolutely.
So thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Melissa Tom. I'm also an emergency physician, and I join my colleague in compelling the board to look at this issue of starting school later. The science behind it is strong, and so the obvious next question would be, well, why don't we make the change? There are natural barriers to any change. Number one, change is hard for anyone. Number two, oftentimes, communities will look at later school start times with concern towards after-school activities and sports. But if you look at schools who have made the changes, it's to the contrary that actual participation increases, probably because students aren't as tired. And so their participation after-school activities and sports increases, their rate of school or sport-related injury decreases, their focus and attention as athletes increases. These are compelling reasons to change. Naturally, economics is a second concern for any school district, primarily transportation costs. And when you look at other school districts who have made the changes, for example, Seattle. Seattle was able to do what they call a flip. They take their elementary students and they put them early, as is natural with their sleep cycles, and they move their secondary schools or students to a later start time, again, congruent with their sleep schedules. This was done cost-neutral, no cost to the district. In some districts, like Long Beach, they were able to save a million dollars with changes in shifting school start times. And if you look beyond just the school district and you look at the nation as a whole, Rand did a study in 2017 that projected an $8.6 billion economic gain to our national economy by just moving school start times in secondary schools to 8:30. I'm asking the board to work with us. We owe it to our students and Beaverton School District to promote their health, their safety, to optimize their academic achievement by meeting them where their bodies are. Thank you.
We have Shishi Jala, followed by Pravas King. Welcome back.
Good evening, Superintendent Grodding and the board, and very happy new year to all of you. I'd like to begin by expressing my sincere and immense gratitude for all that you do. It cannot be easy to see people again and again coming here, making requests, and complaining. So thank you so much. I'm Shishi, and I'm a mindfulness instructor, and this is my third time here speaking on the issue of mental and emotional health. And the reason I'm here is because I have not received any response to repeated requests for a meeting to take this further. And I would just like to be able to discuss it, too, when the timeframes are not applicable or do not work for something of this nature. So in the past, I have presented information on the need for it... So in the past, I have presented information on the need for it, what it is, why it's needed, and some feedback on student benefit that was achieved because of some pilots. And as part of teaching at a school that has a mindfulness elective, which I just learned about, which is fantastic, but I also learned that people are not trained when they're teaching this. So I would really appreciate being able to meet, to discuss this further than the two-minute segments that I am doing at this point of time. I read results of the SSA surveys that were recently published, and mental and behavioral health was a significant focus area of concern across all focus groups. From my understanding, there are task forces that are being set up at the elementary, middle, and high school levels to tackle this issue, and I'm trying to figure out how does a person from outside the community become part of it? Equity and excellence are a standard, and so I want to make sure we have this as part of it. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
We have Promise King, followed by Navila Hersi.
I would remain satisfied come here tonight and then thank you for the job you're doing. You inherited a system that's framed to the contingencies of others. And now you have students of color who are struggling. The parents' expectation is not reasonable. They expect that when they bring their kids here, that they come home educated, well, and ready to learn. But I have received a lot of letters from parents who think I can do anything. Anything they ask, just say something, promise. But here I am tonight before I watch you walk. I am not cynical, because I'm confident that those we have elected in this district to preside over the welfare, the education of our children are women. But the road to heaven is paved with stones. That means you have to innovate, you have to really do the hard job. I look around, I don't think you have the tools to do that job at the moment. I am sure that you will in the future. So I will be coming here again to at least be a part of a solution. So I don't want to harm you tonight without making my own contribution. I look in at Becky, who's been a part of my life for a long time, so I am told tired. This is not how I normally speak. But out of respect for her leadership, I want to thank you for all the hard work you do. Please evolve our force, our parents, in this part of journey to ensure that you have a good graduation rate at Beaverton. Can be proud of. Thank you.
Navila Hersi, followed by Samwa Chawla.
Good evening. My name is Navila Hersi, and I am a senior at Beaverton High School. And today I went to bring some light into some of the racial issues at Beaverton High School. The learning environment has become quite disruptive for Black students. From having to hear students repeatedly say the N-word without consequences, to white students harassing Black students, and even to a Black student being talked to in the office about using the N-word, it has become certain that Beaverton protects and caters to its white student population. We can see that through discipline statistics and how our Black students are given harsher punishments than the white students. However, today, I'm not going to be talking about statistics and data we already know, but share some of my personal experiences of being a Black student in the Beaverton School District. I used to go to Portland Public Schools, and not once did I question my identity of being a Black Muslim student or my overall safety at school. Coming from a diverse school to Beaverton School District was quite a big change for me. There were multiple times where students would say some of the racist, vulgar hate speech in hallways, in classrooms, at games, and see that type of behavior was being accepted and normalized. This is the first year that I did not feel safe in my own school. Black students don't feel safe going to school anymore. If we don't change the way these issues are dealt with, it creates these spaces and environments where hate is thrived and eventually becomes a new norm. To start the change in the right direction, we have to evaluate how we discipline hate speech and think about changing our policies and handbooks around it. Given how many times our current, given how times are currently changing in society, we need to ensure that our students feel empowered and equipped with the right tools to go out into the real world. That change starts right here in this room. Today, I urge you, school board members and school district staff, to change some of your ways to ensure that Black students feel safe in their own classrooms and where racist and hateful language is not tolerated. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. This is the first time that I'm seeing all the school board members in one spot. And similar to Navila, I'm going to share some of my own experiences. And from what I've heard from some of the parents and some of my peers, my experience differs a lot. I'm originally from New York City, and I moved here from Florida. So right off the bat, you can probably tell that I might have experienced different... I might be used to a different kind of schooling. So I just want to personally thank all of you. I'm not sure if you're aware of what has been happening at South Ridge lately, but when I was a freshman, the student population looked a lot different than it does now. They were mainly, they were mostly white students. You didn't really see much diversity. And now it's not, it's not like there's like, like a large amount of students of every race. But I can see that our principal, David Nislan, is taking steps toward embracing students of all walks of life. And school on the East Coast and in New York City and in the South is very different than in Oregon or in Beaverton. I went to school in the projects. I went to school in the ghetto. When I was a student, we had to wear clear backpacks because students would often bring guns and weapons and drugs into the school. And my life has, you know, changed completely since moving here. So there, I mean, obviously, no school is perfect. And there are definitely some issues that, you know, you guys might want to talk amongst yourselves about. But in that regard, I want to personally thank all of you for the job that you're doing with your high schools. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samwa Chawla. I'm a senior at Westview. And I've been here in front of you guys like a couple times now. And I can tell you again that you have the ability to stop what's going on in our schools in terms of races and stuff. But I'm just not going to repeat that again. In these three years that I've been in high school, I've learned that change comes from two things. Speaking at, no matter what the consequences are, and listening, no matter what you're forced to hear. I used to wonder what it was like for you over and over, having to hear children in front of you begging for you to listen to them, pleading for you to protect them. I used to wonder how you would sit and listen to us and still do nothing, how you could sit and still not be able to make the changes we need for you, to be, for us to be kept safe. I soon realized the problem was that some of you were listening, but a lot of you weren't hearing us. I realized that you were seeing, I realized this through seeing that there were some adults who did listen to us and who did hear us. There are many in this room, in front of me today, who have heard me and have turned, have in turn helped me make, make my school a safe place for all students. Adults whose first instinct after hearing our stories were to reach out to me and ask, "What can I do and what do you need?" Adults that, due to years and years of trauma, adults that understood that, due to years and years of trauma, that we have a distrust of administration and took the time not only to earn our trust, but our respect. Adults who realized that as Black students, we face things that they, as adults, couldn't believe, and that we had experiences that made us have to grow up faster and learn our place in the world even faster. What I want to ask you, what I want you to ask yourself is that if you're one of these adults that listened to us, who heard us, I promise you that if you are, you know who you are. I started, at West, due to Westview and due to these adults that did listen, I started the Black Student Summit, which in the first year had no support. I'll end here, but I just want to say, like, thank you for those who listened and to those who haven't listened.
We have Jody Monroe, followed by Justice Marjorie.
So I'm here to support the Beaverton Black community, and I would like to invite some of you from back here to sing my verse. It's Rodney.
Oh, it's Rodney. Sorry about that?
Oh, okay. My name is Lyra Raji. This is my father and my moms in the audience. And I'm here today to talk about my experiences as a Black student, but we, how teachers handle racial issues in their classrooms. So I'm currently a student. I go to Apple, but I used to go to Conestoga. And one of the things that I've seen throughout there is students touching Black kids' hair, making really ignorant comments, and then not getting any... Just nothing happened, no, there are no consequences for them. And I think that that's because a lot of times when students leave up to their teachers, they don't see what's wrong with it. So for instance, I have a student in my creative writing class who kept touching my hair. And when I told him to stop, they didn't want to. And they would basically call it game, like I was some kind of doll, and basically kind of turned me into this toy for them to play with. And I didn't feel okay with it. And when I told my teacher, they didn't really see an issue with it. They were just kind of like, "Why don't you just tell them to stop?" I said, "I did." They said, "Well, if they didn't stop, I can just tell, I can just tell them that they should stop." And even after that, they continued to touch my hair, and they still wouldn't do anything. They just kind of blew it off, like, "It's not even a big deal." And it's not the first time. It happened, it continued to happen for pretty much over the course of a month. And it made me feel really disrespected as a student, and I wasn't totally sure what to do about it. The only thing I was able to do was turn to my friends and just kind of rant, rant. And so what I'm asking you guys as a board is to think about what consequence, if there can be consequences for these kind of things, and how teachers should be able to handle it, and giving these teachers the resources, and letting, kind of teach them to understand why these are so, why this is so, like, disrespectful to students, and how to manage it in, or how to manage it in the future. Thank you.
As a parent in this district, I've been in this district for over fifteen years, although my children have not been in these schools the entire time they've been here, very strategically and purposefully to protect them. When I send my children to school, I'm depending on the adults in the building to look out for my children. Even if they don't understand how they're being treated, why it's a problem, even if they don't fully grasp the weight of what another young person is doing, or how they're behaving, or how a collective group of young people are behaving, they have obligation to look out for my child. I'm thankful that my daughter, just met, my son, who's a senior at South Ridge, have achieved or found a place in themselves when they deal with these particular type of issues, to take a higher road and not be consumed by anger. As a parent, and also as a person of experience in education and service with youth and families for over twenty years, I understand that the training that is required and necessary is available. There are parents that are willing, like myself, to help, if asked. And even after volunteering at times, you know, I would say for the most part, the administrative staff, we tied the engagement, have been supportive of us and appreciated the way we've shown up. But I'm looking to you as a board to show the leadership, to push for more. The parents want to help and want to do more for their kids, but as a Black Student Summit, and we want to bring those young people together for support and learning, to support with facilities, support parents being able to be there, support with food and other resources. When schools are having ongoing issues, where young people are taking a daily toll for other people's ignorance, we're looking to you, and we're depending on you to bring us in and allow us to protect them. Thank you.
Catherine Watkins, followed by Zadora Williams.
Hi. So I'm a teacher here at the district. I've been here for about fifteen years. My son did go to Little Warriors at Alawa High School. I was very excited about that. He grew up wanting to be a student at Alawa. I could not do that, because as a teacher of color, the way that our students of color are treated at Alawa High School, much less a lot of our schools in this district, I could not let my Black son go to Alawa High School, where they allow a blue-eyed, madder lad to hang, where they allow an officer who has Black bitch kona on his Facebook to continue to be employed at that school, as if it was not a big issue. I'm embarrassed when people ask me where I teach. We don't, we're not addressing whiteness at this district, and we're not a white district anymore. So we need to start doing white workshops to help these white teachers understand what their, their, their contribution to the trauma is. Because last year, I had a student who was reading James Baldwin. And this teacher came up to him and said, "You know, I'm a minority as a white man at this, in this country." It was totally unsolicited. And so this became a huge conversation in which the teacher had told the student, "Maybe he shouldn't be reading James Baldwin and just pay attention to what his teachers are saying." I looked at him and I told him about this, and they said, "Oh, yeah, he's a Trump-er." That's not a resolution. And then to have that child, to outwit that teacher, did even further damage. So I'm asking that our district starts looking at an idea of doing whiteness training so that we can start seeing exactly what our issues are and start working on them. Thank you.
Zadora Williams, followed by Tyrone Henry.
Hello, everyone. I am a licensed clinical social worker in the community, and I provide mental health therapy to a lot of our African-American students within Beaverton School District. And a lot of my concerns are regarding the mental health. And how when Black students try to speak up and use their voice, they're in silence, or they are being dismissed right in front of the white students who have either called them a racial slur or has asked them, "Is it okay for me to call you a nigger today?" And these are the different situations between South Ridge, Beaverton High School, Westview, that I keep hearing about. There's a trend to the point where kids are starting to feel extremely depressed. They're not coming to school as often as they should because they don't feel safe in the classroom. And that is a problem for me. As an advocate, I want to know and want to challenge you all to start thinking about. If there are no resources that you are not connecting the children to that can help be representative of them or help in the process of them speaking and having a safe place to share their voice, please bring someone in, help connect these students with their community. Because for many of them, a lot of the students I work with, they don't, they don't come from Oregon. They come from other cities in which this is a culture shock to begin with. It's greatly white in the school system, so when they do use their voice and told they're too loud, or, "Oh, you're, it's not even of importance," it's not sitting well for them. Because now they're starting to decrease their voice. So it is my concern, and I just want to keep and putting this on the table, that we need you all to reach out to the Black community. We need more programs around mental health, or even just being a connector, showing them who is in their community. You are not alone. How can you facilitate that? I know I've worked with Reynolds, and Reynolds do a lunchtime for the Black community, where Black community members, business members come in. So we've been thinking of, how can you be, make a Black community for Beaverton School District to connect them? Thank you, guys.
Tyrone Henry, followed by Desiree Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I am just a dad, a concerned dad that has been involved with the Beaverton School District for the last eighteen years. I just happen to be a Black dad. I'm a Black dad who has coached, who has sat on... I'm a black dad who has coached, who has sat on advisory boards for the school district, who has sat on selection committees for administrators, for teachers, you name it. The previous two superintendents used to call me all the time and ask me, hey, Tyrone, can you sit on this one? Can you sit on that? I have yet to receive a call from Don Grady, who has been here for a while, okay? I have been involved in raising money for playground equipment for elementary schools. I have gotten Nike, Safeway, the Portland Trail Blazers, Office Depot, to donate coats, to donate school bags for underprivileged children. I have a daughter who has graduated with honors. She came and interviewed with the school district and I asked her, I said, Victoria, were there any people of color on that panel? And she said, no daddy, there weren't. I said, you gotta be kidding me. There used to be people of color because I used to get called for those interviews. I have yet to be called by Don Grady, as I had his previous superintendents. All the time I used to get calls. So I am very concerned. And the other thing before, I run out, I got ten seconds. Why would you replace a woman of color in a diversity position with a white man? Nothing against white men, but that is not the position for a white male to be in. You cannot replace this person with a, with a, you just can't do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to mind, I think I did not say at the very beginning, we ask that you not call anyone out by, by name. If there's something that you want to take out personnel-wise, we can take, take that out. But this is not the format to do that in.
All right, we have Desiree Williams followed by Jordan Theory.
Great, thank you. And I apologize, I actually have vertigo, so it's a little bit difficult for me right now. Um, but I do appreciate the opportunity to actually sit in front of all of you this evening. Uh, we've organized quite a few parents to show up and are actually continuing to organize black families. Um, I come here today representing the Beaverton Black Parent Union. My daughter and my husband just were up here previously. Uh, we've had a lot of experience with the district. And I've actually wanted to do this work for a long time. Um, I do a lot of work with Portland. Portland has a lot of organizing and community. We have never found that in Beaverton. And so that's one of the problems, being able to connect through schools. And it was a question, why couldn't we connect to community through our schools? It's just one indicator of the isolation that black families feel in the district. So the Beaverton Black Parent Union is bringing black families together and really the message that I want to bring is that we're here. We're here and we want to be partners. We want to be involved and we will continue to show up. This is just the beginning for us and we really want to participate, engage with all of you in solutions that are really going to result in different experiences for our students. So we're a collective of parents. We want to see cultural, culturally relevant resources and support. We also want to see the retention and recruitment of black teachers in the district. We want to be a pretty honest of the district so that the numbers are transparent in terms of the performance of our students. We want the N-word to be raised as an abuse and bullying experience and that would be very powerful for that in the district. We want cultural competency training for all teachers, staff and administration. Um, and we want to see accountability. And we want, again, the opportunity to be partners with you in this. We are professionals. We are parents. We have experience. We have talent. I myself am an equity consultant with over twenty years of experience in the field. We can bring a lot to bear to be partners in the solution. So thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Jordan Theory, I'm a product of the Beaverton School District K through twelve, life here in the flesh. Uh, thank you for the work that you're doing. Um, I want to start by saying that, you know, it's kind of sad when a black family or a family of color in this, that lives in this district chooses to send their kid to Jesuit or OES, thinking that that's going to be a better environment for them. Like, really. And that's what's happening with a lot of families in this community, right? So that's just a, an example of what I'm seeing. And in the conversations that we're having with families, we see consistently that black families are just not feeling supported, are not feeling welcomed in this district. And my plea to you today is to be more proactive, use the tools at your disposal, policy, right? The resources that you have to be leaders on these issues of equity yourselves and set an example, not just for the district, but for the whole state. Because Beaverton has a unique position here as being most diverse city in the state of Oregon, right? And the one that is home to a multinational corporation that brings a lot of people of color here, right? And they're facing the same retention issues that the teachers here are facing, right? And that's because of the, the environment that folks are dealing with. And so that implicit bias, that whiteness that Ms. Watkins was talking about is very serious. The other piece is small steps that you can take to address some of these equity issues. Let me give you an example. The district is twenty-five percent plus Hispanic Latino. This is my fourth meeting and I rarely see more than a handful of Hispanic Latino people here. We should be ashamed of ourselves, right? Also, interpretation. Why don't we have interpretation services here available for people so when they do come, they do feel welcome, right? Last point, every meeting I come to, there's usually not enough seating, right? There's a lot of space in this room. We could probably reconfigure it to make more room for more seats so that people don't always have to stand. Thank you for your time.
Dominique Jackson followed by Leonard Jones.
Hello, my name is Dominique Jackson. I'm a mom. I have, well, I have two kids in the Beaverton School District and, um, part of our issue and the reason why we only have one is because as a black student, my son felt like he wasn't supported as a junior at Sunset High School. And me, as a parent, I was frustrated trying to talk to college, um, the college counselor and regular counselor and the principal to figure out the college plan and that just wasn't happening. I always felt like I was pleasing, um, his teachers and, um, just not getting anywhere. My son was being basically valed to a PCC and that wasn't what he wanted, but nobody else seemed to care about that. And I feel like as a parent, I shouldn't have to grapple with the school like that. My son should be able to have, you know, just a normal dream to just go to a four-year college and not be acknowledged and that, um, and that pipeline be made for him in school where it wasn't. And I have a daughter at Cedar Park and we're considering, um, moving to California where I sent my son so that I, I know that whatever dream that she wants is going to happen. But I'm willing and I'm here to help facilitate and, you know, teach in any sort of type of way um, in regards to, you know, how we should be dealing with black students and the needs of parents and for you guys so that we, I don't have to move and other parents don't have to go through this. Because I shouldn't have to send my sixteen-year-old away just for him to go to four-year college. That's it.
Leonard Jones followed by Veronica Jones.
Evening superintendent, board members and officers. I have a couple of concerns and I'll just read them out. I came to ask you to have an open mind to consider other ethnic perspectives when discussing the needs of our school district community. I'm asking for your bravery to enter into a dialogue on what skills are required for a growing diverse school district. As a community of administrators, teachers, students and parents, we all need new skills and resources to harmonize the different perspectives to make our community successful. I have two sons in one school and a daughter in another. And when I asked my kids this evening, uh, what concerns they had, they talked about hair. They talked about people playing with their hair. They talked about people using language too freely with them. But the biggest thing that all three of them said was just that we're getting kind of over the slavery discussion in history class. It's like there's no robustness in the curriculum to go into the fabric of American history other than slavery. So I think we need skills and we need resources and I just wanted to bring that out.
Veronica Jones followed by Ramai Abrami.
Hello, my name is Ramai Abrami and I am a parent of three students just like Leonard Jones. We have the same fabric of family core. Um, I have two at APMA, one at, um, Westview, both tenth grade and one eighth grade. My concern is how the district schools are, um, inducing trauma on my kids. I'm not sure the district gets aware of the role it plays in my students' academic opportunities and if your educators understand what it really means to practice trauma-informed curriculum. For instance, my kids often come home sharing how they are being taught about racism as a past tense, learning about what it was like to be a black person in the past. At the same time, they are experiencing racism in their schools and in the class, classroom in the present tense. It is hard, disheartening to know that the Beaverton School District educators do not acknowledge the needs of my kids and are not giving them the opportunity to express injustices that they are experiencing. It doesn't take a lot to create change. What a teacher does in the classroom can mean the difference for each of my kids. I ask the district to enact new policies and inclusive curis, cr, cr, oh, sorry, curriculum, which can be the change. Thank you for your time.
Dominique Abrami followed by Anderson DuBois.
Oh, I'm Dominique Abrami, I'm already known.
Thank you. And then Anderson DuBois followed by Nadia Hassan.
All right, good evening. It's good to see some familiar faces. I'm Anderson DuBois, the Youth Right Services Manager for REEP, a partner within the school, within the, within the district. Um, and I oversee Aloha High School and Beaverton High School. And it's, I want to affirm what our students were saying and we need to hear that. Um, because what I hear is that folks are touching their hair and treating them as though they're not human. It's like they're animals. That's not okay. Um, and it's, it's great as a community partner to be on the fringe in those conversations. Where we were in high school, we were in the Black Student Union together with, um, our students in, uh, in those conversations. At Aloha High School, at the all-staff meeting today, actually, they just showed, um, a video that we, uh, helped to put together around the N-word. The, the, the challenge that I have is that there's so much more that we need to do and we've been talking about that, right? And it's, what does that look like? Let's use some of the trainings that REEP offers every year that doesn't get used, that's free to the district. Um, let's continue to bring our students to the events like the Black Student Success Summit that happens every year, the Black No Challenge that happens every year so that we can build that community. Um, the thing that I see and hear sometimes from my administration when we, um, do bring up some of these concerns is that, um, well, everybody, a lot of students use this word, the N-word, and so we're not sure exactly how to approach that. I believe there is policy around that. I, I believe that it is supposed to be met with either suspension, like conversation through that, and that, that does not happen. I've seen that. And so we, we really need to do something about that. Um, and I'd like to bring some solutions forward. Thank you.
Nadia Hassan.
Good evening. Um, thank you all for your time. Thanks for being here. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about the student success act and the plan. Um, I was able to look at some of what was put together and, um, based on a lot of the conversations, I feel like we need to talk about how we can use this funding. And I want to let y'all know, I'm also talking to you here at the cabinet and not just the board because I know you guys are a big part of that as well. The student, uh, the SIA plan requires vocal student groups be listed and districts to detail how they engage that group and their families in the planning process. Um, I'm curious if students of colors have been a focal group in the BSD for implementing the plan. Um, I know the application also requires the district to use an Equity Lens tool in its planning process. Been curious about what that tool looks like. Um, the state suggests each district pull together a data review team to determine, assess student needs and the performance growth measures. Uh, who's on that team and are members of the community or outside community groups a part of that process? And I ask that question because I have engaged in some conversations with some different folks and have not felt, uh, heard in some of those conversations and I'm trying to kind of bring that forward. Um, because I know there's a lot of parent groups that have a lot of ideas and, um, even heard from someone out here that it felt like they had some ideas and we want to make sure that they're heard. Uh, certain things I really want to make sure we're thinking about and focusing on is, um, helping children that enter kindergarten be ready. Um, looking at students who are not eating breakfast, um, looking at teacher retention data, looking at chronic absenteeism. Uh, I'm really concerned about our, uh, school to prison, uh, pipeline and what are we doing to look at our discipline data every month? How are principals looking at that data? How are they being held accountable to that data? Is that data even being looked at? Um, looking at our student to cancel ratio, uh, looking to access to culturally rooted trauma support services. Every time I say, oh, I really need a person of color to talk to, I feel like there's not a lot of people. But they're out there in the community and we just need to get us connected together so we can continue this dialogue. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight for public participation. A lot of good food for thought. So thank you very much for taking your time to be here tonight. With that, we're going to start our reports and first up is Suprenta Grady.
I'm going to limit my comments a little bit. As most of you know, we had a fire, um, that started Saturday morning at Beaverton High School. So at this time, uh, we do have some latest update and would ask Deputy Superintendent Reed and, uh, Chief Facilities Officer Don has come up and give us a, um, brief overview of where we're at as far as, um, start of school, classrooms and the plans moving forward.
Well, again, as you're well aware, um, we did not hold school for our Beaverton High School students today. That allowed us, uh, further preparation for the, the building and a deeper clean that needed to occur. But most importantly, we need to do an air quality check today. And so very pleased to report that the majority of the building is ready and open for kids tomorrow to, for a regular start of the school day. Um, I'll allow Doc to get to some of the specifics of the facility. Um, but I have to compliment Ann Irwin, just amazing, I believe. Um, her work, the community of Beaverton High School running around and just moving forward. In addition to that, uh, I feel like I'm a little lucky as people on the base of the earth having hired this gentleman as well. So, uh, put a lot of faith into his hands and he carried that forward over the course of the weekend. Stepped into the role, um, was able to hire consultants and moving us forward in a very quick fashion, I believe. So very pleased with our effort so far.
So in summary, we had, um, over twenty spaces at, uh, Beaverton High School on the east side of the, excuse me, on the west side of the school. Three rooms, three of the leadership rooms, um, had the fire damage, with a fire occurring. You had adjacent spaces that had fire damage and smoke damage. We're working through that. So over the course of the next couple of weeks, we'll be working with our property restoration L4 to, um, clean those rooms, remediate those rooms, to get them back to where we're going to, um, to get to normal condition. So great response by L4. We had our environmental health consultant on site. We did the air quality. They took, um, those, uh, samples, made sure the air was safe so that our students can return tomorrow. Um, so we got a long way to go, um, but we are, uh, moving forward in the direction. And again, with Ann Irwin's help and her, her guidance, it was a, a very, um, smooth process, a very common process, but we've got to, we're worried about that.
I'm glad that, uh, they all know that there's a smell to a school. You just walk in, it's a school smell. It does, Beaverton did not smell like a school thing. It was like the cleanest air I've ever smelled in my life. It was like the cleanest air I've ever smelled in my life. It was just amazing. I mean, we had, how many people working there?
Curved 50 today.
Yeah, and so I believe we were expecting over 90 this evening through the night to continue that work and clean, the depths of that cleaning. So it takes that kind of a team. And we staffed up other six custodians on a regular basis, so there's no way we can go to that depth. But teachers were even commenting as they were going, and permitted to go over to their classrooms today, made comments about, just like, "Oh, my gosh, this is like the freshest air I've ever breathed in my life." So, a little funny story as well. On Saturday, when I was at Beaverton High School, and the fire was actually in process and in progress, I was at the front doors, and Beaverton Police Officer waved me over and called me over, and there were a group of students. Amazing what people will come out for. They very nicely were willing to take it upon themselves and thought it was a brilliant idea. That school should be canceled the entire week this week, and it's okay, we'll take it in stride. And what they were really after was canceling your finals this week. That didn't happen, they just, so, but they tried, it was pretty fun. Any questions that you may have to the building or any other?
I just wanted to comment on the Toilton Hills Fire Department.
All right, yeah.
And how amazing they were to get there so, assuming they're around the corner, but they just got it out so quickly, and what is it, thank them for what they did to help get it out so quickly.
Tremendous effort. I would say there was probably anywhere between 70 to 80 firefighters there, and they did a tremendous job. Standing there and watching, I know the kind of damage water can do, or my experience and others. When I'm standing there in the parking lot and I see all these hoses going to the building, and these hoses are flat, and then all of a sudden, they fill up. All I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, there's that much more damage going to occur." But again, they could take it to three rooms. We were very fortunate, and it did not spread the added space or anything like that. So, very, very fortunate.
This may be, this may be a little early, but do you have any sense how long it's going to take to get you to back to full capacity?
So with the immediate areas around those three damaged rooms, we're looking at a couple of weeks just to get those back. They've got some water and smoke damage that has to be taken care of. But the rooms themselves, those three rooms, it's going to be a while, a couple of months, in order to get into those rooms and take care of all that damage that pretty soon gets lost. And we're looking probably late spring or summer by telling you that.
So that's something you can do while there's students in the school?
And yes, that's what we're planning on, and taking that she's been all part of the process in terms of when she's getting her rooms back and how we're moving along. So she is very aware of that plan and every report.
Thank you for everything you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move on to hearing for our schools, which we always enjoy doing. And first up is Montclair Elementary, and Principal Sean Lebride.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Susan, that was helpful. I want to thank the school board and Superintendent Grouting for inviting me here this evening and talking about the wonderful things that are happening at Montclair. I want to start by talking about the uniqueness of a small school. We strive to implement the initiatives, curriculum adoptions, and systems that define how a school is run and functions, and to put in place the items that the district asks us to do. And that gets harder and harder all the time as you think about a small school, because it has limited resources. We're constantly asked to do more with less. But I think at Montclair, I think the wonderful thing about the school that I'm at is that we rise to that challenge each day. We're always wearing different hats to support each other in our goals. Our goal is to meet the needs of all our students. And we feel very good about some of the things that we're doing at our school and the mission that we're exploring. We're exploring innovative methods to engage students in their academics and worldview skills. We're starting a reading enrichment program this year after school. And we were able to do that with a grant from BEF, and we are very thankful for the resources through those type of programs. This after-school program boosts fluency and comprehension for 3rd through 5th grade students, and we know that many of our 4th and 5th grade readers took a dive at a certain point in their career at the elementary level. So we thought this was a very important program to start. Additionally, our community partnership team is hosting, for the first time, a culture and heritage event this year. And it's dedicated to celebrating the various diverse ethnicities at Montclair in our community. We feel that a small community is important to create a culture of camaraderie and care, so that we can all learn and grow together, especially since we are very strong and intimate and work very closely together. Along with many exciting things happening in Montclair, we do have our challenges. Outlined in our school learning plan and relevant in the report that I submitted to the board, we recognize that we need to do some work, especially in the area of mathematics. We've dedicated ourselves to exploring some leverage practices with regards to mathematics. And one of the practices, leveraging accountability, requires each individual in our school to ask and then act upon the very simple question of what am I doing to impact student learning on a daily basis? And we're currently meeting in collaborative groups to build capacity with them. We know that there's great talents and strengths within our building, and we want to share them. And so we do that on a weekly basis in our staff meetings. Finally, I just want you to know that you're always welcome to come out to Montclair, and we invite you to join in the wonderful things that are happening there. And I'm very fortunate to be part of the Montclair community. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you being here this evening. Are there any questions, Susan?
One, as a parent of two alumni, from Montclair, I want to thank you so much, Sean, for keeping that community strong. I have, you know, of course, concerns about the math numbers as well. And my question is, you know, there are teachers that are strong in the math, and there's teachers that are not strong in math. I mean, it sounds like you're working on the collaborative piece of getting those kids. Well, how do you approach that when a teacher is really not confident with their new math curriculum and getting them up to speed, or having someone there to support them if it's really difficult?
You know, that's a great question. I think that one of the things that we talk about in our school is that we have a high level of generalists that are expert in a diverse amount of disciplines. And we're all trying to do very, very broad things with the limited skills that we have. And so, one of the things that I've talked about before is our math collaboration, which meets the second Tuesday of every month, and talks about practices that turn the dial, best practices, talk about really unpacking the math workshop, which is new to all of us. When I was teaching, we didn't teach in this manner. And so, I'm pulling in TOSs from the district. We have our math representative who goes to professional development. She comes back and reports to our groups. We're doing lesson studies in the day, and really exploring the FASNO lessons. So we're trying to unpack what it means to be a mathematician in our building.
My comment about that is, I mean, I appreciate that, and I think it's really difficult, and I think our teachers work really hard to get to where they need to be. And then I'm thinking, as these 5th graders transition to middle school, and they're kind of a hind in their mouth, you know, and that's not a Montclair issue, that's a district-wide issue with the new curriculum. So I know it's really difficult, so I just wanted to, you know, comment that we have been asking you really tough questions.
They're all tough questions.
Tom.
I just want to start by giving you a big congratulations on your achievement data for the ELL students and the students with disabilities. It's really great to see that. When I was kind of digging into the data on math, and I'm thinking specifically 5th grade math, I saw a pretty big gender disparity in the data, and I was wondering if you could comment on that?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up to me in our previous email conversations. We went back and we looked at that, too. I think one of the things that is difficult to do is to quantify a child's score, because every child is so unique. And when we looked at the data, looking at 17, 18, 18, 19, we were really compelled to look at the demographics of each student and the group of students that we had. We found out that in our most recent scoring population, 30% of our female population in that one classroom alone were impacted in a way that they were receiving some type of intervention supports. They were either in an ESL program, they had an IEP, or they were receiving intervention either in math and reading throughout the course of the year, compared to only 10% of our male students in that same group of population. Go back even further, the year before, we were looking at 22% of our female population severely impacted compared to 11% of our male population. Other than that, we're needing to dig in and figure out, you know, are there discrepancies in how we're teaching our males versus our females? That's a big question that I think we've always asked throughout generations. And so looking at this data right now, it certainly puts that on the table again and makes us question, what is it that we're doing?
Thank you.
Donna.
Hello, how are you? Nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
So I guess I just have a question, because I know that with this new math curriculum, which has been around for a while, requires a lot more reading. You have to actually read the word, understand the word, interpret it, and, you know, how it fits in a sentence in order to get the appropriate math response. Versus, back in the day, because I'm an old person, we used to just look at the number, there were equations, it was just purely numerical. So you didn't need to speak English to get a correct score. You just need to understand the concept of the number, and depending on what the equation is, you come with the correct answer. So my question has to do with, I don't understand why there isn't a direct correlation, whether you can do this or not, between English language skills. So you'd see a school, and it has really pretty, pretty good English language achievement numbers, but then you look at the math, and the math isn't so good. So I don't understand, do you have an idea of what would be going on? Because one would think, based upon how I characterize it, if you're a good reader, you shouldn't be doing pretty good in math, because you're reading and interpreting. Can you help me understand that, or do you know, or has anybody even thought about it?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And I think if my staff were here, they would have a lot of different answers for you. I think one of the things that they keep telling me is that with our FASNO units, which are amazing units, and although they're aligned to the Concord State standards, they use different skill sets. And those skill sets are not the same skill sets that are used in doing the OSAS or the XPAC, or whatever we're calling it today. It's a different test, it's a different way of thinking. And so, I think part of what we're finding as a dilemma is that what we do on a daily basis in our classroom is often different from what we're being assessed on and what's being shown as data points for our school. In terms of the reading itself, I think we've done a really good job in focusing on reading. We've put all of our intervention programs around, in the school, around reading. But because of our small school's structure, that presents a problem. We have no one then to go in and do intervention for math. So I think that there are answers there that can be figured out, and we can certainly look into the comparisons. But I think we also need a lot more resources to tackle that problem.
Leanne.
Thank you for coming. I have a question on our suspension and expulsion data that you have. I know we had a comment earlier about tracking, and does anybody even pay attention to it? And of course, we do, we report it on every school. I was wondering if you could share with us, what do you do with that data?
Well, the first thing you try to do with that data is keep those numbers low. This has not been a year that honestly I can say that I'm keeping the number low. We have professional development in our building around how to support students who are blowing up, for lack of a better word, or to escalating. And so that's one way we try to keep the numbers low, is we have supports in place. One of the things that we have this year that we haven't had in the past is our Student Success Coach. And she's been very instrumental in helping our students regulate. We've created a Zen Zone in our program where kids can go and have downtime. So there are things there. I would say that one of the difficulties is that our Student Success Coach is only in our building two and a half days. And so, to really have broad support for kids who need them in the moment, we need her in the building all the time.
I'm sorry about this, I have another question.
No, that's okay.
Because of what Leanne said. So I know conversely, and I know that, you know, students have issues, but conversely, so do teachers. And every school knows of a teacher or a number of teachers that are poor classroom managers, or for whatever reason disproportionately treats certain students, probably not in an appropriate way, and send them down to the principal's office because they can't deal with them. So what do you do as a leader of your school to try to work with those teachers, not automatically accept the student that they send down to their classroom, and try to make, still feel, make the student feel good, still work with the teacher to make sure that, probably she, as always, most of them are she's, that she feels confident about herself as well? How do you bridge all that, and at the same time, get the teacher to do the right thing?
I take all day during that, because that's what I do every day. So, first of all, I think it goes back to training. You know, we spent the last year just doing cell training. We put aside reading and math and everything else, and just looked at cell for professional development, because we had teachers who, they themselves became dysregulated when a student was blowing up in the classroom. And so, we were looking at how to recognize adult atonement and attunement, and recognize when you yourself are becoming unable to help the student in the moment. We also looked at programs, so students were getting training in the classrooms. Our Student Success Coach was going in and doing trainings. Our counselor changed what she was doing and doing the trainings. The other big thing on it is, it's coaching teachers. You know, we're in a unique position that school is becoming more and more volatile every day. And it's a national thing, it's not just at Montclair, it's not just in Beaverton. And so, as a principal, it's my job to support teachers, go in, coach them, give them management ideas and strategies. But then there also comes a time when you have to say, "Is this the right position for you?" And maybe coach them out of the profession. I don't like to do that. I feel that everybody has an opportunity to grow and learn. But there are a lot of things that we can do to help teachers improve upon what they do from A to B.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you being with us here tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, we have West TV Elementary, Scarlett Melvin.
Hello. So I believe I have already spoken to all of you, but just for those in the room who don't know, don't know much about my background, this is my thirteenth year as an administrator in Beaverton. I started out at Meadow Park as an assistant principal and then moved to Gulf Airwell Hassel for eight years. And this is my first year at West TV. I'm excited to be here this evening to tell you about the wonderful things happening at West TV. But first I'll tell you just a little bit more about my background. So I come from a family of educators, both of my parents were teachers. And I always knew from a young age, this is what I wanted to do and I can't imagine doing anything else. So I love what I do and I love coming to work every day. Born and raised in Oregon, in Fort Valles, attended Oregon State University. And my daughter went through Beaverton School, she graduated from Westview. I tried to talk her into being a teacher, she wasn't going for it. She wanted to pursue her dream, which is in music. So she's down in Los Angeles. So a little bit about West TV, many of you know that it was built in 1955, it's an older school and it's a very small school, three hundred and fifty students. We have one specialized program, an SUCU classroom, in addition to grades K through five. We have students with a broad range of abilities. We have the very talented and gifted students. We have one out of ten students are talented and gifted, but then we also do have students that receive intervention support. And one in ten of our students receive intervention. So there's a very broad range of abilities. West TV is a wonderful school with incredibly supportive parents that are very active in our school and do all kinds of wonderful programs, our literacy, geography club, the help with our Battle of the Books program, and then have like events every month, sometimes twice a month. So we're very fortunate to have a very active parent community. And in my short time, we, as a staff, have really bonded together very quickly with the intrusion of water that came into our building in the fall. And we ended up relocating to Timberland for five weeks and that was a wonderful experience. It's very difficult and challenging, of course, but what was so wonderful was getting to partner with ACHMA and the ACHMA students and they were able to partner with our students and it was really fun to see. So those are some of the wonderful things that are happening currently and we are really excited to be back in our school and to get settled back into the regular routine of teaching students. And our teachers are passionate and absolutely love what they do. So I feel very fortunate to be at West TV this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Scarlett? I just want to say it's nice to see you again and I miss you not being in my zone.
Thanks, Sean, I miss you too.
Yes, I'm glad that things are going well for you over at West West TV. I know it's a nice community.
Thank you.
So for Jenny?
Scarlett, can you just speak a little bit? Scarlett was one of the teachers that, or principals, administrators that was transferred and probably did not like it at the first because I think somebody said here something, nobody likes change. But I know I've talked to you several times, can you just tell me about that and that transition for you and how you believe, what you believe the decision has done for you as an administrator?
I think I've been in a building for quite a while. I was at my previous school for eight years. And there does kind of time where you're ready for a new experience and a new challenge. And when I came to SUD, there are a lot of aspects of being in the school that are very different from the school that I was at. And so it was a real growth opportunity for me. I feel like I'm learning a lot and I think it was very beneficial to make a move and I'm really grateful that I have the opportunity. And I also, if I could just really quickly, I wanted to just publicly thank all of the people here in the room that were super helpful for our transition when we had to move to Timberland. And so if I could just mention just a few people, Carl Lee, Josh Gomez, my executive administrator, Patrick Meggs, they were at my side for five weeks straight, making sure everything went smoothly. And I just want to thank them for all their support.
Susan?
It's about the math. And I feel like I was a little harsh on Sean, but it's more of the curriculum change and the professional development and the gap that we have for our children, whether it's the, you know, English language or it's our math, that they're behind because we've changed our curriculum. And I'm concerned about that gap.
Well, as Sean was mentioning, there is, it's a new way of teaching math. And so when you have new teachers that join your staff, you really do have to get them up to speed and it takes time. We're very fortunate, though, that we do have specialists in the district, our math coaches that come in and work with them. We also have mentors that work with our new teachers. So they are getting a lot of support, but it does take time and it doesn't happen quickly. It's taken our teachers that have been learning it now for three years, it's this year where they're starting to feel like they're experts at it. So it does take some time.
But are kids losing out because of the learning curve that our teachers have? And so they're behind in math or are they still up to speed and we're not seeing it in the math scores?
That's a really great question. I would say that I don't feel my students are behind in math. I do know that this year our scores went down a little bit, this last year in math, and it seems like across the board, that's been the trend in other schools as well. And again, I would attribute part of that to the fact that there is attrition and we do have new teachers that we're having to train, but it's hard to know.
Just a follow-up math question. I believe I heard Sean correctly, correctly, he can tell me if I'm wrong, that with this new math adoption, it's a lot more about concepts than formulas. So is the issue centered then on the teachers not getting the concepts or maybe the teachers not being able to, where do I look for, teach, there we go, the concepts appropriately to the students?
I would say that it's a matter of teachers having to retrain themselves because that's not the way they were taught.
I have a quick question. Thank you very much. And, you know, we always do see the reflection upon where students feel like someone cares about them and, you know, ninety-one percent and that parents report that they feel informed and included, ninety-four percent. Those are, you know, really high numbers and that's a reflection upon your community there. My question is, when we talk about change, one of the big change was the elimination of the PYP program at West TV. And I'm just wondering, with this first year, did you feel like that program, the learning process was embedded in a culture there or with the departure that it totally went away?
So we actually have made sure that it didn't go away. So we're actually teaching the units that we did last year in PYP. So we really didn't stop being a PYP school this year, even though we have, we do have one less staff, we don't have a Spanish teacher. And then we also aren't able to collaborate as often this year. But in spite of that, we continue on and we're still doing PYP this year. And we're very hopeful that we can have it next year and do bring it back.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank both of you for long days, so thank you for being here. All right, next up, financial update.
I'm here to the boards of Lieutenant Grady, good to be here tonight. Financial update through December 31st. We have only one significant adjustment for this month. We took a look over winter break at collections on the local option levy. They're not keeping pace with what we had estimated, so we brought that budget estimate down by a million dollars on the revenue side, so not great news. On the expenditure side, that's not reflected in the report you have tonight, that'll be reflected in January, our January financials, which we'll present to you next month. So you won't see that in the A Q reports behind it as well. But here I go again, I know they're not bad news on where we are on the budget front. Questions for me?
Tom, what accounts for that dip in the levy funds? Is this like the housing market slowing or getting less money coming in, compression?
So it's roughly two things. About half of it is compression. And, you know, compression is when taxes go above the measured by limit, okay, so you know all about that. So that's about half of it. The other half of it appears to be a little bit of optimism in our number in terms of what we would get because of growth in the community. So it's kind of a half and half.
Donna? So I'm just wondering, what impact is that having on our budget? Are we having to cut something? No longer buying paper?
Yeah, so we need to look at the impact on moving essentially those expenditures over to the general fund at this point and what that impact will look like. Because the local option is completely invested in classroom teachers, that's not something that we tend to make changes to during the middle of the year. So I will be back to you with impacts and potential impacts when we get together another month or so.
Tom?
I want to ask a question about not just a million dollar impact, but what are we going to be doing differently going forward when we're tracking this revenue, this specific revenue source, to ensure that we track more closely with what's actually happening in the market? Or is a variance of about a million dollars something that is very difficult to build a model that we predicted?
I think it's something that we can refine and take a look at. I don't know what was used in the past in terms of the assumptions and how it got built. So there, you know, it's a very property by property kind of an analysis when it comes right down to it. I'd like to be closer than a million dollars on a thirty-five million dollar number for sure. But, and we'll just pay close attention to it as we move forward. Thank you.
Be a real Susan Downer. So that looks like our deficit is like eighteen million dollars now?
Well, so remember what you're looking at on this financial report, are changes to the working budget, right? So we have these working budget changes where we're saying, we found some things as we go throughout the year that we picked up on and we're modifying the working budget for that. There's a whole separate cash flow estimate that we run that says, here's where we are during the year, here's where we think we are each month of the year and where we're going to end the year. That's not something I don't think that's been shared with you on an up-to-date basis, on a kind of moving forward basis. And when I get a report that I like, that I think you might like, that's something I'll start sharing with you. So you can kind of get an idea of where I think we're going to end the year every month. You get a rough estimate of it here, but I think we can do a little bit more refined job of that in the months to come. I still get my arms around it.
On the property tax, is this something, and again, I know, but is this something that we see one time or is compression going to be an issue with all the things we see on our property taxes? Is that going to be something that's an issue?
Compression is always there and can continue, so we will keep a close eye on it in terms of, I mean, over time, that local option levy is a piece of the tax that gets squeezed out if we're above the measured by limit. So there's always that possibility and, yeah, it could continue to worsen over time.
Any other questions? Well, we'll let Mr. Sunshine lead.
My apologies.
All right, Division 22 compliance, Dr. Bridges?
But wait, there's more. Debbie Downer, I do really like reporting to you in the month of January since that's the school board appreciation month. I just thank you for your ability to keep the big picture in mind, that keeping students first, your leadership, your commitment. Mike said he'd triple your salaries because you're doing such a great job. So Division 22, so the good news is, last year, we were in, not in compliance with the Stables for Education Division 22 in eight areas, and now we're down to three. One of those is particularly troubling and that's the drug and alcohol, the lack of drug and alcohol education. It's an annual requirement and it's not happening in our high schools in grades 10 and 12 because there's no vehicle for making that happen. Our plan of correction last year was, well, the health project team will take care of that and they didn't take care of that. And now I think it's falling on the counselors to find a vehicle to have that done. So this, so I'm reporting on our compliance for the eighteen, nineteen school year and I can pretty much tell you right now, we're not going to get this done this school year either. So we really do, I think we need a waiver from the State Board of Education for this second year so that we have a plan in place for next school year to meet this requirement. We're going to have the same thing with the social studies curriculum because we had our budget reductions and we froze the PE and science project teams, though that work got behind in terms of adopting curriculum, identifying instructional materials, that's been going on, you've been getting updates on that. But we also suspended or didn't even start the work for the social studies team. So the State Board adopted standards in social studies in May of 2018. We do not have curriculum aligned to those standards last year, so we're not compliant. We're not going to have curriculum aligned to those standards this year. So that'll be a second year of non-compliance and we will need a waiver from the State Board for that as well. We will, during the next school year, adopt the standards, identify curriculum materials and have professional development in the summer of 2021 and implementation of the curriculum in the fall. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about was instructional time. So the waiver that you approved last, the application for the waiver from the Department of Education for instructional time requirements for students in alternative education programs, we're talking about Merlot, GED, home instruction, early college high school, that was approved by the Department of Education. So we were in compliance with instructional time requirements last year. Our current instructional time this year is really tight in a couple of places. Some of our kindergartens are like right at the minimum hours of instruction. One snow day will push them below the limit. That's okay because the requirement at the school level is that eighty percent of students in the school need the instructional time requirement. So if one grade goes below, we're fine. We do have one options high school that's about five or six hours above the minimum amount of time. So I was really happy last week, we did not have any time off for weather. I was also really happy that, it's a terrible thing to say, but that the fire closure happened at Beaverton High School and not Westview High School where there are fewer instructional minutes to begin with. So we are very tight. I may be coming back again because in Division 22, you recall, at the end of last year, you approved a waiver for students that's consistent with the rule that has to be approved by you, that students, we do not, we can count students as meeting instructional time requirements that don't have a full schedule if they're seniors and on track to graduation or if they're taking an AP, IB or dual credit course. So I'm waiting to run those numbers after first semester grades to see who's enrolled in an AP, IB or dual credit course. If we are below eighty percent in any school or ninety-two percent in the district, I'll come back to you in the spring, we'll have a public hearing and approve that waiver again. Also report the demographics of the students that are, who are waiting that instructional time requirement for. That's all. Donna, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Donna? So this might be a question for you and maybe for Jenny, too. Hi Jenny.
Hi.
I'll lump it together. You don't have to come up. So I know that the Student Success Act Fund is supposed to be used to having, you know, closing closing the achievement gap. So I was wondering if you are considering, thinking about, because it seems logical to me, leveraging those funds to work on ethnic studies, because as we know how beneficial ethnic studies are to students of color. What can you tell me about that? Because that might help in making part of the compliance, being as part of compliance if we can, we're focused on that today. And Jenny's shaking her head, so maybe she has an answer.
Did you shake your head?
Yes, she did. She shook her head.
Oh, because I was going to say, oh. I mean, there's a potential for that. I would hope that in our current budget, so for social studies and PE, we support those adoptions and provide professional development to teachers. We have that same obligation in social studies. So as we select a curriculum that attends to...
Ethnic studies specifically, because that's a new law.
Yes. So that will be in our standards. Teachers will receive professional development on that. I think where the SSA could come in is if there are additional professional development needs that we don't have in our budget, that we need to satisfy some of those funds to make sure that students are receiving a well-rounded education, including the diversity in the social studies curriculum that we've been missing for a long time. And the ethnic studies curriculum standards is really going to help us meet. Is that the question?
That's exactly right. Yes, and it's more from the general fund, not the Student Success Act, and the teaching and learning is prepared to have a funding to be able to do the ethnic studies and social studies curriculum.
I have a question on the non-compliance on the drug and alcohol education. It looks like potentially it will come through the advisory classes. Is that something that the health curriculum cadre is going to make a proposal for supplemental? I know they're working on some other supplemental curriculum right now for other things not related to drug and alcohol. Or where is that going to happen and how can we get ourselves back in compliance?
Dr. Hudson? Are counselors working on pay-arts?
No.
I thought Dr. Seika said they were.
Not that I'm aware of. Maybe you'll want to get back.
Yes, we'll get back to you on that. Because it would seem natural, someone will do it and we'll give time.
Okay, that's all I need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anne?
I have another question about the drug and alcohol requirements, mostly just because I was, I felt like I was confused. You listed out grades ten and twelve being taught in advisory. We actually teach health to tenth graders, so I was curious about that.
Have I got my ears wrong?
I'm hoping so.
I think so.
Sorry.
Okay, that makes me, I was like, did I miss something? But, so that helps me. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then the other thing I was surprised to see was the data gap, I guess I'll call it, around the teachers having access to their growth data for their current and prior students? Is that really what they're supposed to be getting? Like people who, so that you can see what your students did when you had them last year and then also in what state kids came to you? Is that the objective of that?
Yeah.
Okay, and we've had the data, we just haven't been able to give it to teachers in a meaningful way? Is that...
Right, and we'll do that through synergy.
Thank you.
Tom?
For the compliance issues with the drug and alcohol prevention, I'm trying to understand the issue. Is it that we're out of compliance at all of our schools? Are there pockets of compliance and then non-compliance?
I think it's all of the schools. We've been relying on the health teachers to deliver the drug and alcohol prevention curriculum and lessons. So it's annual instructional requirement, but only two grades are getting it right now. And this is kind of, I don't know what happened. We let that slip somehow.
Okay, so really the issue is that the two grades of kids aren't getting health, they're not getting the drug prevention.
Correct.
And then you guys are working on a plan for figuring out where that lives.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I believe I asked you this offline, but for the record, when we are out of compliance and we ask for different waivers for different things and we're out of compliance, is it just because it's a state best practice guideline? Are there any repercussions for being out of compliance a certain amount of times?
So, yes. So the State Board of Education under the law could withhold state school fund for any district that either does not submit a plan of correction or fails to follow through on a plan of correction in that year. There's also a provision that we can ask the State Board of Education for another year to get our plan done, and that's what we need to do in those two areas, the drug and alcohol instruction and social studies curriculum.
We'll all be holding ourselves accountable for that, so thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Student Success Act update?
We are arriving at January, which means that we just have eighteen more months to kind of get some of this work done. In the last couple of weeks, we have held three convenings, one for academic convening, one for student health convening, and one for equity. Those were facilitated by our Northwest ESD partners and facilitated by Megan Irwin and Rob Simpson. All of them had quite a few people with, in these convenings, and we came up with a lot of great information to bring towards a gathering that we're having tomorrow to start writing the application. And David's going to tell us a little bit more about what tomorrow holds.
Thanks. So tomorrow is really the main turning point in our work in drafting our SIA plan. So this has been a really fantastic process, and I do want to start out with somewhat of a response, Donna, to your question about, are we considering X thing in our SIA plan? And the thing that I have been continuously pushing to our team of leaders in the district and any external partners that clue us, is not about what we here are wanting in the plan or not wanting in the plan. We've really tried to work very hard to decentralize the policymaking so that it's not us in a room coming up with a plan. It's a broad group of partners from both the community externally as well as the community internally for the district, really working through a protocol to determine what is the best investment we can make for our kids and for our focal populations by the statute of requirements in the Student Investment Act. So it really has been a great process, but I know that at times it can be frustrating when people say, well, are you going to do this? Well, I don't know. I don't know because tomorrow is really where all that's going to come to head. So last week, we had, last two weeks, we have these three main convenings that Ginny referenced, which were a great opportunity for a facilitated conversation for these broad groups of people. Representatives from each of those groups will convene tomorrow here at the district for nearly an entire day session of roll up your sleeves and get out your paper and sharpen your pencils. We'll have representatives from the finance team as well, so that we'll be sort of actively costing on the fly, and I know that's giving Jessica heartburn even as we talk about it. But to really determine what are the best, most effective investments we can make in the district, based on the needs assessment feedback from the fall, based on the continuous improvement plan, based on our disaggregated student achievement data, best practice research from around the country, and the quality education model, all applied through an equity lens to really develop that plan. It's a lot to say. At the end of the day, tomorrow, we hope to have a list of about forty-five million dollars worth of work. Now, you might say, whoa, wait a minute, forty-five million? Then we've talked about about thirty million. Now, let me sort of reference that for you. So we did finally get estimates from the state today about what the estimate is for the district. They are estimating for the Beaverton School District, it's about thirty-two million dollars and change, with the N change being passed through to our two charter schools who are eligible to receive funds under this. However, we know that there are going to be things that we put forth as our key strategies we might not be able to accomplish in that first year. We might not be able to hire all the qualified people we want to hire, and the measure requires all the money to be spent by the end of that first year. So we want to put forth to Department of Ed a sort of tiered approach with multiple strategies that we'll be able to implement a sort of a Plan A and then implement a Plan B when things are not able to be accomplished in that first primary strategy. This is, this is not something that's written in there, but just as an example, if we said we wanted to hire one hundred qualified social workers next year, we might get halfway through the year and realize we're not going to be able to hire one hundred qualified social workers. So we need to be able to adjust and plug in another strategy that will support the same targeted focal populations in the district and get it accomplished within that same year. So that's what I'll be working on tomorrow. It's a call order for the day. I am very optimistic that people with all the right orders will be at the table working on crafting this, and at the end of the day, we'll have an actual package that we can begin to refine and bring to you all in March.
And then what happens after we have our draft application, we go out for another round of interactions with our focal populations. So Toshiko's convening with her cultural and linguistic groups, special education, same thing with parents, and our principals are going to also be helping us, particularly at the secondary level, in meeting with students and with their focal populations to get a response and some more input so we can find to this application. There will be a survey, very brief survey, for people that want to do it that way, to give us some input, and we want to bring this to you in March. March ninth is what we're shooting for. As you know, it's due by April fifteenth. I don't think we want to be on the bottom of the stack, so it's somebody free to think about our timing and if we needed to, wanted to, reasons that type of thing, so somebody can.
Jenny or... Maureen, can one of you speak to what happens after we engage the department and the department collaborates with us and they're going to send us back? Then there's another process that we have to do as far as metrics and accountability.
Just as a reminder on that, and you know we haven't talked about it, but it always bears repeating, so our target is to bring to you an application on March ninth that will have investment priorities and specific things that we're proposing to get done. It will have some broad conversation around targets. The measure requires the district to set targets based on five metrics that are defined in statute and any other metrics we choose to define locally. However, you will not at that time be approving those targets. So you submit the application, if you all approve it, it goes to the department for their review and approval. At that time, we then engage the department in negotiations process over what the appropriate targets are, and then that, once we come to agree with the department, those targets will come back to you for final approval at some later date. It's a little bit undefined. I think the wild card here is how long it will take the department to review and approve two hundred applications, and how long it will take the department to negotiate several thousand data points across the state for final approval. But for us, the desire is, of course, that approval of the application to begin. The metrics are about tracking progress on the backend. We want, we feel very eager to get started with the work, and given the vast hiring that's probably going to take place in the state, we feel it would be important for us to get out in front of that to be able to recruit, hire, and get the best people in our abilities for this work.
Liam?
I just want to comment from my perspective of being part of this committee, and just kudos to how it's come together in such a short timeline, and we were kind of leading the pack out in the state because nobody really knows what anybody else is doing, and we're probably, well, I know David is helping ODE catch up and get it all out there. But I hope you can see that it went, I look at it as a funnel process, that it's been this huge gathering of data from our communities and our partners and focus groups. Susan and I have attended some of those, and they've been very well-run and really tried as hard as we can in a short time to reach to the far different kinds of groups and within our community, engaged our associations. So we've taken a lot of information and then had these partners come together, and I just want to echo what David said. It's not this committee making any decisions, it's drawing people together to do that. And Susan and I both plan to attend tomorrow in the afternoon to see what the kind of end product might look like or how far they get and let them, watch them do their work. But the other thing I just want to remind us as we go out and hear back on how we're spending and all of this, this isn't the end-all. We will have a continuing process over the next couple of years, and I know there will be many more in our community that will want to be engaged and hear about it and know, and we're going to do everything we can to include that and get feedback on it and continue to improve the process. But I just wanted, from my perspective, I feel like it's been a really fruitful process and a great job done in a very short time.
Thank you.
A couple of things from me. One was, I was appreciative to get the final report out about, that showed all of the input that we had received. I really noticed that a couple of themes popped up loud and clear regardless of who was providing the input, which I think is always, in many ways, it makes our job easier, you know, when we all agree. So the things that popped out were really an exercise, and I won't put these in any particular order. Mental health support for students, class size, which many people really felt like fed it, was one and the same because really the focus on getting more adults in rooms with children was important. Broadening our curriculum to make sure that students had access to the full range of school options were really the kind of the things that popped up, at least in my reading of those. To set my own expectations after this, the day, I would expect that those three things might receive some attention, but I was also curious, particularly because we'll be going through a phased plan, if something like, if training for all staff might be something that we would be looking at. You know, we heard suggestions tonight for things that would conceivably improve student achievement for our underserved groups and might provide an opportunity for us as we look to improve our continuing education for all of our kids.
Yes, there's several opportunities to have professional development and some trainings. Some of what we're looking at in some of the convenings that we're having is kind of like a package deal where you are talking about having a social worker and a care team and a student success coach and the training that goes with it. So it's looking at all those factors that include the staffing and then the training to make it a full package deal so that you're getting everything you need professionally development-wise and everything you need from the staff. So we're looking forward to having those in place tomorrow. That's kind of what we're doing is how do we put them together to make it most effective and best for our students?
Donna? I just want to say that I appreciate your leadership, Jenny. I know you've been leading the charge on this. It's a monumental task, and of course, everyone that's been helping you has been great, you guys. But I guess I just wanted, just a practical thing you just mentioned to me later, I just kind of wanted to, to sort of see the list of community members and partners that are going to be participating tomorrow, or as you're working on the draft, the first draft. Thanks. Anne? Okay, any others? All right, what I'm going to do here is take a break, and then we're going to come back for our discussion items, and so at eight fifty.
Our first discussion item is the first reading of Board Policy DVD on financial reserves. You have the policy committee met last week, and we discussed this, but this is the place we're looking at new language, and this is the place where we need to discuss, and we've got Mike here to answer any questions on it. So with that, Anne, I'm going to have you address how we came about and kind of a little bit of the history on this.
Thanks, Peggy. Many of you know this is a policy near and dear.
And we've got Mike here to answer any questions on it. So with that, Anne, I'm going to have you address how we came about and kind of a little bit of the history on this.
Thanks, Peggy. Many of you know this is a policy near and dear to my heart. It is something that early in my board tenure, we took a really deep dive on our financial reserves and what would be an appropriate amount and process for having them in general. At the time, you might recall that the district was just coming back off of the reeling experience of having to lay off large numbers of the staff. And as a board, we wanted to ask ourselves thoughtfully how we could avoid being in that situation again. It was very disruptive for teachers. It was very disruptive for students. It was not providing the right kind of educational experience that we wanted as well as honoring the professionals that worked for our district. And so as a board, we felt very strongly, we wanted to prevent being in that situation again. And I believe because of the fiscal prudence of our board, we in fact have been able to provide some stability through using the reserves those out last year, that we weren't forced to take some more draconian measures. That said, so you might recall that in putting together the policy originally, we took a look at other districts across the state as well as financial trends, economic ups and downs in the state of Oregon over a long period of time. And we came up with the straw man idea that three years was a reasonable amount of time in order to build back a reserve. And that tended to be about the amount of time between recessions and why we would want to be able to quickly replenish during good times to prevent for bad times. I'm so happy that many years later, we have had a long string of good times. And actually, I think it's put us all in a position, in the state, which we frankly, I never imagined we would be in, where the state has a healthy amount of financial reserves itself. And as a state, we've been able to grow consistently in our economic terms for really a mind-boggling amount of time at this point. I know in Beaverton, times are still hard for us as a school district. Were it not for the Student Success Act, we would be facing really drastic budget cuts again. So as a financial committee and then with the policy committee, we've been considering some changes that we would like to bring forward to the board for consideration. You'll notice that it maintains the sentiment behind the original policy, which is that we would like to make sure that we have reserves sufficient to be able to main staffing during difficult financial times. We also want it to be responsible in terms of how we build up those resources and monitor those. Let's see, what else was really? There was one change that I wanted, and we also, having been through last year's discussions, and we put a lot of thought into the use of rainy day and recommending against that term because of some of the connotations that are inherent with it. So actually, in the section, use of reserves where it says rainy day, there was a, we recommend that that say financial instead. And then we strike rainy day generally. The debates around how hard is it raining didn't seem to be fruitful. And so with that...
All right, Anne, when you finish, you're wrapping up.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm done.
Okay. The other issue was within, you know, making sure that we build back our reserve within three years. We thought, you know, that would be a monumental task in trying to put aside money and would be counterintuitive because the idea was we're going to be trying to level out the rough years. And so how challenging would that be then to have to come up with money and to put back into the fund perhaps during that time that we're utilizing the funds to level it out? So we decided that the best thing to do would be to strike that because the concept is we plan on putting money back in, but we're not going to put ourselves on any sort of time schedule to get it back.
I guess the one last thing I would say was that, that as a committee, we felt like it was really important to have a policy that we follow. And so we wanted to make sure that, you know, when those of us who are sitting here now, you know, it's my highest hope that this, a policy like this sticks around for a long time and that it gives boards the discipline as well as the flexibility that they need, which is I think what we always look for in policies. So, I don't know if there's questions or concerns, thoughts?
Liam?
I just want to reiterate how important I think this policy is to the financial health of the district. I'm nervous not putting a timeframe on rebuilding because that could mean five years, it could mean 20 years. And I know practicable will be a word we will try to interpret. So I'm, I just want you to know that internally, I'm struggling a little bit with letting the three years go. I like being within compliance at all times of our policies. However, if this is the building back of the first year, I don't feel like we're out of compliance with a timeframe still. So I don't know if you can shed more light. Thank you, Donna, for explaining a bit, but I'm not sure the three-year limit puts us out of compliance unless you're telling me for sure, there is no way we will get that built back up in three years.
I think at this point, I think Mike can probably address that because we did mention that and we discussed it about the amount of money we would need in order to build it back. And I think that's critical to answering your question.
So we took a look at that. And if we did it in three years and just took the number straight across, it'd be in the neighborhood of $8 million a year to do that, to get to the, you know, 24, 25 million dollars we'd like to have in there. So that kind of a bite right now in the year we're coming off of, where we are living off of reserves that were, I think appropriately used to get us through this year, would be a very heavy lift for us. So if you want to keep the three-year limit, what that means is then even more, if we don't do much this year, it'll mean even more the next year. And I think, I am not comfortable with only 5% reserves. That's, those are semi white knuckle types for me in our office. We don't like that over time. We'd rather be up in that 10 to 15% reserve area where things are a little more comfortable and we can withstand some storm. But I think, given where we are today, that's kind of our reality here in year one of, that's a significant investment into the reserve to do it over a three-year period. Might actually take a little longer. Who knows? Maybe, maybe we're going to get significant increases through the student investment account or, you know, tax collections are much better than God. There's a lot of things that can happen, but we won't. I guess a way I was looking at it was if they gave the board a little more of a click that, or a disgrace.
Susan?
The years that we were able to build up our fund were the years that we were in a huge growth period. And I believe that, I mean, I know we're flat and, and some of our areas were going down, you know, socio-economically. Challenge, population is decreasing. So, I mean, I understand conceptually why it's difficult to put the money back in. And I know that long-term, and I think we're talking 10 years, that we're looking at growth again in our district, at least I hope so economically. But I hope that it would come to a point before 10 years that we can start putting some money in and saving.
We'll be more intentional in that. And one of the things I really like about the policy is that the superintendent and probably myself will come to you and say, here's the plan and here's, here's how we're doing. At least we'll be accountable to you on an annual basis to say, here's where we're at, here's what we anticipate, and here's the plan moving forward. I really like that accountability piece in there to make sure we're in front of you talking about, kind of getting your thoughts about where we ought to go as we fund, refill that reserve.
Tom? So as I was thinking about this policy, this one's difficult for me to think about in the abstract because I see this as a series of trade-offs where I could kind of go either way with a shorter period of time or a longer period of time. And that determination really depends on the context in which we're making the budget decision. So the more I thought about it, the more I started writing out some questions that were popping up into my head. So do we want this fund to be something that mitigates downturns or losses over a one-year period, a three-year period, a five-year period? How do we think about using these funds? Because one of the things I think about, just kind of draw it, right, is when you go down with your revenue and then you come back up, what we're trying to do is not go down so far. So how, what's that distance you're bridging? What's the point of avoiding a cut in a single year only to have to take that cut to next year, right? That's something that went through my mind. Is the ideal circumstance when one is able to regain the lost revenue so no cut occurs, right? But that also is a little idealistic. What reasonable assurances do we have the economic conditions don't worsen to a point where the funds will be needed to ensure core functions of the district, right? And again, we're talking about a 5% contingency, which is pretty small. And you can't really do core functions off of that. If we replenish our rainy day fund next year, can you quantify the budget cuts required to establish the fund, right? But I boiled all these questions down to kind of two key questions for me. One was, is the money more valuable invested in services currently or held back to mitigate against the future cut? And then the second question is, would a future cut likely be deeper than the cut incurred were we to re-establish the rainy day fund? I.e., would a future cut threaten services more core to our organization?
So Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I can go. I just, oh, it's okay? Oh, anyway. So I just think that I know when, in putting this together, I know the idea was, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. It's kind of like you're kind of reacting to the cards that you're dealt with and you're making a decision in real time, just like we did when we decided to dip into the rainy day fund now. We were, you know, looking at the landscape, we're looking at what our obligations were and the importance of having our teachers in the classroom and figured out that, wow, you know, we're going to, we're going to see what we can do to bridge that so we don't have to do hu, hu, just horrible cuts in the fall. I know Leanne was on the board at the time when they had to make another similar decision. And they ended up tapping into the fund, right? Right, Leanne? Yeah. There wasn't a fund. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. There wasn't a fund. And so that's why we kind of created it is because, because of the pain that the school district went at that time. So I guess what I'm trying to say is it's really difficult to answer that question, I would think, because we just don't know what's going to happen in real time. We're trying to have some money left over like we do now that hopefully we won't have to tap into it. But there would be some money there to tap into if we needed. How much? We don't know. We might need to use it all, we might need to use only part of it. But also along the way, we're hoping we can put more money in so it's not as low. So I guess that's what I would say. I don't know, Mike probably has more to say after.
I would like your professional because it is, it's a, it's a, you can, we can talk about this, first of all, as a philosophy. Is this a philosophy that we as a board are behind? And then you have the particular deal, but these, the points that Tom brings up, I mean, that is a, that is, we are, you would be taking money to force a savings for something down the road that if you don't, you know, so I would, I'd be interested in your professional one.
So I think it's a balance over time, Tom. I think that what you're making at is we probably won't build it back as fast as we ought to because we don't want to sacrifice program to do that. And as we come to times where we need to draw it down, from the professionally, you would get a recommendation that would be incremental about that as well. So we would, we would belabor some of those issues and, and again, you kind of have to watch time play out. Is this the 2002 recession that lasted six months in reality? Or is it, you know, 2008, 2009 where it kept going and it kept on giving? I think that, that would be instructive and you kind of don't know to, it's right there in front of you. But you will always find for me a recommendation that would be incremental about a lot of things because we want to keep that balance of program versus reserves. And at the same time, I'll tell you, a 10% reserve is not outrageous. Most districts have it. A lot of districts in metro area have a 10% reserve. So that's not, you're not sitting on stacks of cash at a 10% reserve. That's, that's pretty routine in terms of what my colleagues would tell you is an okay amount to keep on reserve in the district.
I think another way of asking all those questions would be when we're looking down the road at the economic conditions over the next two, three years, right? When I'm thinking about these questions professionally, I look at what the City Economist does, right, and the work that's being done to look out in the future. What do you think for the next two, three years?
I think trees don't grow to the sky. You know, every year we don't have a recession or a downturn, we're more likely to see one coming up, but I don't think there's anything in the immediate term, for luck or anything for good luck, that's on the immediate horizon. I think Oregon's still growing. We still have a pretty healthy economy in our state, pretty healthy national economy. So even, you know, I watch the state economists and their forecast pretty routinely, don't see anything on the immediate horizon that suggests we're in deep trouble. In fact, the kicker is kind of artificially held down the resources that are coming in the next plane because of the kicker. So I don't, I don't see anything significant on the near term.
Thank you. Anne, did you?
I've been welcome.
Okay. So what I would like to propose here, because the policy committee got to kick this around pretty good and put in our two cents. So for those of you that are not in the policy committee, this is the time, if you have any issue with the language, whether it be the year or what we're including, this is the time because we are going to bring this back up for a vote so that we have a policy that we are following.
One question.
Eric?
So, I mean, since we don't have a time deadline on this, like what Leanne was saying, does that mean that all the discipline is up to the district now and you kind of lose the board control or is that not the case?
I think one thing that I wanted to highlight is that both to use the reserves and then the process for building up the reserves are under board direction. And so that's still very clear in the policy and, you know, it's the good news, bad news from the board because in the end, it'll always mean that the board has to choose and set the direction. But, and it's clearly in their role to do that. So it's part of directing the superintendent to manage the budget, how to use the reserves, both those, it's part of the general fund as well as the financial reserve, and then how quickly to build back those, you know, I know it makes the CFO's job easier or many can go, well, you know, they tell me that's what I have to do. It is always important.
And it's all, it's done on an annual basis. So we're looking at this every single year.
That brings up the one thing that I was hoping maybe we might add is something about an annual report. I don't see it listed there down in the replenishment. It says, "In the event, the superintendent shall propose a plan for the replenishment of the reserves as soon as practical." Oh, and an annually report. I just want to ensure that that happens. Dawn may be great at doing that, but the next superintendent in 10 years, we want to make sure that they are great at doing that as well.
And I believe Mike was very specific on that, that he, he wanted to be held accountable to the board as far as if we don't do, we're saying, he's going to come back and say, this is the reason why and this is what we're going to do about it. So, but, you know, you're right, you could have a new CFO, you could, but here's the thing, we could have a whole new board and they may not have the same philosophy here at all. So this is, this board, our philosophy, what kind of language do we want, and then hold our staff and ourselves accountable to that. So are there any other, Tom?
I'll be brief because I gave you a dissertation earlier. I support this work and one of the things I want to say that I think hangs over all of this, which is future boards can change policies. So you could put an arbitrary number on it and then the future board can change it. It's the commitment from the people in this room, which I think is so great about what we're doing here. And so, yeah.
I think Anne said this already, but under the use of revert, reserves to make sure that the rainy day re flags financial reserves instead of rainy day. Yeah, I said that. So I'll get that fixed.
We just need to change our vernacular too so that, it's a very easy thing to get into the habit of, so we're going to have to change our...
Financial reserves.
Financial reserves.
Financial reserves. So, any other? So we will see this as a board next month then with the, just that one change and we're good with all the rest of the language. All right. Thank you. All right, our next discussion item is the first reading of school board policy DFA, the investment of funds.
Thank you, Chair. Members of board, you have in front of you policy DFA. It is presented to you without change at all. I would draw your attention to the very last section, section 11, that says the CFO will annually review the investment policy and submitting a revision to the Oregon Short-Term Fund Board if required. And it says, again, the last sentence, policy and any revision subject presented annually to the board, the board will approve all revisions to the policy. So I'm bringing this to you as your annual, take a look at it. Since I'm new, I'm curious as to how you want to get this in the future? Do you want this as a consent? Do you want me to come up and say, you know, here we are again, no changes? Do you want to formally approve it? How, how would you like to see this in front of you this time next year or in the future?
I'll give my two cents. I think something like this, it can be very easy to go on our consent agenda, but I think if we can just have a time of the year that you're just coming up and we're making sure that we're still okay with these current, I, I, taking two minutes, I think is well worth in our meetings. That's my two cents.
Agreed. Agreed. Okay.
We've got agreed.
General agreement.
General agreement. That's how it works. That's how the consensus works.
Yes, we do. Let's go.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're getting right there. The first reading of ARs. We can have Anne and David.
You have before you a series of ARs and you may be asking yourself, why are we approving ARs? Aren't we told that administrative regulations are left to the purview of the administration? Well, there are a few circled throughout that state or federal law require that they be adopted by the district's governing body, which is, of course, you all. The ones before you today are entirely special education regulated ARs and federal law requires they be adopted by you. So therefore, they are in front of you today. The edits to them are mostly technical in nature and the process they go through, just to give you a little bit of background, they are recommendations from OSBA that are then brought to the Department of Ed's Special Education Team for review and vetting approved by that, that team and then distributed out to school districts for school district adoption. Any changes made at the district level would then have to return to the department then for additional approval by their team. These, these edits are all pre-approved by the department. So should you adopt, that will be putting them in place as is.
They have also been reviewed by Danielle and she, she's aware of all the changes and has approved this on her end as well.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. We'll look forward to next month.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda. I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Summons. Board communication. Anybody have anything to say? Leanne?
I just have one reminder for my board members that, and Superintendent Grodding, that next week on Wednesday night, the 29th, we're holding our Washington County Legislative Summit. David, you are welcome to come too. And it will be at the Washington County ESD and we are providing dinners. Come at, it could be out by eight. You'll be hearing a lot about the Student Success Act and how the different districts in the Washington County area are going about their community engagement process. We're going to do a bit of a thank you to our legislators and we're going to have students from various of our districts talk about what the Student Success Act hope is for them and maybe some barriers that they hope that will be overcome by it. So it should be a rich, engaging evening. We're hoping to see most of our legislators there and I would love to have you all there as well.
Leanne, Susan?
Pat's going to have to help me with this because I'm not sure what the title was, but last Friday, I was at a meeting with parents and Pat and Donna and David were there as well. And it was regarding respectful cultural awareness and about specific religious holidays, whether it was Hindu, Jewish, Muslim, various other religions that weren't necessarily represented to, that the district be more aware, possibly come up with some ARs. I know one of the parents thought about a new policy around that, but we encouraged, you know, more education for our principals and again, possibly in AR, but it, it was a very intriguing meeting. I was glad to be a part of it.
Yep. Anne?
I guess I'll just piggyback on Susan's comment. Although I wasn't at the meeting, I have been tracking this issue. Actually, I think the first time I talked to a superintendent about this particular thing was about six years ago. It is a, an issue that actually is near and dear to me, my own personal experience. I recognize that it is a hard solution. I also believe that as we strive to be more inclusive to all students, whether it's our calendar and how we respect the traditions of other families or providing the needed training around race for all of our employees, that we have so far to go. And until we recognize that at every level in our building, we will not be serving our students the way that they deserve. And so I just, I feel like the first thing is to call it out. I think whether it's in our general fund or as part of Student Success Act, I think I was shocked the first day I showed up on the board and was schooled about, you know, my own personal feelings. And the more I look out, I realize, you know, I'm sure I have a long way to go, but I feel like my district has furthered that we, we just have a lot of work to do. We need to continue to take on enough. That's what I have to say to it. I'm honored to work with this group as we tackle that.
I also want to comment on the group that was here today. And I know it was a very tough discussion, but I was happy to hear the commentary and happy to hear them feel comfortable coming to us. And I agree with Anne that we have a lot of work to do in our district.
Nealeen? Tom?
I got to visit the opening of a new school this week, which is one of the most amazing things of being a board member was to see that. And I'll keep it brief, but for me, it was more than just the building. It was walking into this new space that said to our students, you matter and the community is investing in you. And that was such a strong feeling being in that building with those kids as they were getting to celebrate that. And I'm, I'm very excited and I thank all the folks in facilities who made that happen because I know that's a lot of work to open a school, especially in the turnover of just a single year. So thank you for that work. It means a lot to our students and our community.
All right, we'll piggyback on what Tom said. We all got an appreciation at the opening of William Walker and cute songs and, you know, we've all been to openings and it's, it's just great. But just how many of their staff and how many of their parents just thanked us? And it's us thanking them. They are the taxpayers that said yes to a bond and continually say yes to us. And so it, it was a great day to open up a new school. Another thing that I'd like to bring up is Wednesday, February 5th, is Oregon's World Read Out Loud Day. And in one of my other hats that I wear, I am on the statewide Start Making a Reader Today board. And they will be having people in schools everywhere as readers and the importance of reading. And for those that you don't know, SMART is in all of our title schools. And they are always looking for other people to come in and read with students. And not only reading, but they give books to students so that students walk out. So some of our schools that are in real strong need are McKinley and Hazeldale. They both, they still need some, some volunteers there. So just want to make you aware of Read Out Loud Day. And if you don't have any other plans, I know the schools would love to have you there reading out loud to, to students. I want to also acknowledge the work of the staff, what they did over the weekend. We never know when crisis is going to hit, but I always am assured by the professionalism of this staff, from Anne Irwin, all of her staff, all of, all of the folks that cleaning up, nobody, you know, why, why it was you get in, you pitch in, you solve it, you do it. And I know how stressful our teachers and our staffs are already under so much stress and every single time we have something like a flood or a roof or whatever, I'm just always amazed by the resilience of, of our staff and that they make our students feel safe. But again, tonight was a reminder that not all of our students every single day feel safe. And it is our job as a board to look at that and find ways. But that said, it is great to be on a board that is dedicated to the work and I'm very proud to be a part of this school board, school board team. And with that, any comments from superintendent?
Thank you all for what you do all the time. As you see, we've got a lot of work to do. And I think today, you've heard some of the comments and that works. Those same conversations are taking place in our, in our schools individually too with our, with our administrators. So it's happening in Beaverton, it's happening in Oregon, it's happening across our nation where our demographics are changing and unfortunately, some of the supports for diverse children and diverse parents are not there, are not there yet.
All right, that, with that, we are adjourned. Our next will be a work session on Monday, February 3rd at 3:00 at Five Oaks Middle School.